Is that a board appeals meeting to order for June 3? I don't think we have any minutes, but great, so we can skip that. Any member updates of zoning or planning?
Yeah, just FYI, I don't know if it's important, but Jen, if Wheeler approached me while I was on the walk and started talking about the golf course and I told her I couldn't say anything. And ended the conversation, but I just wanted my people to speak to your turn.
I think that was exactly the response that you should be going to. Any other updates of zoning, planning, unless it's just interest? Still be advisory?
We are going to be approving the plan this month. So basically done and after that it's into implementation.
Okay, excellent. Correspondence, we've got a couple of pieces from international and attorney. Considering the still comprehensive permit, so wait until that to comment on it and that couple of notices from the conservation commission. Just some public hearings coming up, if there's anything to discuss there. I think there were some additional items.
Yes, there was an additional piece from the planning board. And it's just a memo going over that the housing production plan is in draft form. So if there's any comments on that plan, we can submit them to Valerie or myself. So yeah, I can also provide print copies if needed, but it's 140 pages, so.
All right, and then appointments. So the terms of the chair, the clerk and the invited committee member expire as of June 30. Any discussion, anyone want these jobs? I'm moved even as they are. Do you want to still be clerk?
Well, I've spent a lot of money on the campaign.
That'd be fine, yes. You, I think, said you weren't going to be able to continue.
Right, yeah, I just got onto the EDIC, so that's gonna keep me busy.
Okay.
I'm on with this.
Understood. Well, I'm happy to take at least a motion. I mean, I'm happy to still be chair. I mean, and someone wants to, like, I'm not, like, you know, saying I have to stay here, but do they say that? All right, well, I guess I'm happy to get promotions for chair and clerk.
No, I don't know, I just said so moved quickly before any other discussion, before anybody else could step in.
Second.
All right, there's a motion, a second to reappoint the current chair and clerk to serve a successor term from like this 2024 to June 30, 2025. On favor? Or opposed? All right. Keep on going. For green advisory committee, I mean, it would be nice to sort of pick somebody to do now, but this one guy, but I'm happy to. See if anyone wants to, has any interest or want to wait. I mean, is there a question? I'm not trying to say whether that's even necessary for us to do it, but.
Yeah, I mean, it's not, I mean, as I said, I think the next step is really trying to move the plant forward. And it's going to be focusing on a lot of public discussion and and sort of resources that people can go to in order to help meet the plan as well as within the town and the state to get the resources of the town to meet his goals. So again, it's going to be a lot of just implementation issues and reacting to opportunities that come along. I know what they are studying, they're wanting to be applying for in September, they're about to. So the next level of green community, which hopefully will significantly increase the amount of money available to the town.
Anyone hankering to serve at this point? We can sort of table that for the moment and put on the next, next month's agenda, see if there's any, you know, any interest. Technically, we got two minutes, so we'll just sit tight. We have to stick by our schedule, we don't have a choice. It being 7:10. No.
It's advised not to yet.
Okay, so I understand the applicant is here, okay, thank you, sorry. I don't always know who everybody is. For 56 Harbor Road, so due to inadvertent error, frankly. One of the butters to, so according to the zoning rules, all the butters have received notice that if they have any concerns, that they know about the hearing and that they can come here. Due to inadvertent error, it's my understanding that one of the butters did not get notice of the hearing. And we learned about that, I think it was today. Yeah, okay. And so unfortunately, if we were to proceed, it would be in violation of state law, which if we ever rendered a decision, could make it something to appeal and reversal and a bad road that nobody really wants to go down. So at this point, I think my understanding is that we're correct or wrong, though, that we're in agreement to just move the hearing to July 8, which is our next date. At which point, by that point, all of the butters will receive notice and then we'll be able to.
They all got to get a notice again.
Yes, I got corrected a butters list from the assessors today, so we should be good to go.
Okay, so, so with that, so that's the reason why I can't even open the hearing, because technically, you know, that also then triggers certain, you know, certain things that we need to do at that point. So at this point, I think I'll entertain a formal motion to move the hit to postpone the hearing.
I'm moving the correspondence hearing continue to July the 8th at 7:30.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any comments, any discussion, or none, on favor of moving the 56 Harbor Road up to hearing to July 8?
We are able to schedule site visits if anyone is interested ahead of time. So we can either do that now or I can be email correspondence. Whatever the board prefers.
So I would be interested in saying. I'd like to go to, you are a lobbyist.
So according to the applicant.
I'll send you email.
Then due to, due to certain rules, it's usually advantageous for us to go in small groups of either one or two. Otherwise, it's kind of a quorum, otherwise it's a quorum, it's got to be a public meeting. And so, you know, to avoid that, we just go, we can look at it in one or twos and then we can even avoid any sort of discussion.
Sure, I'm happy to answer any questions for everybody and have them come down.
Excellent, all right, again, sorry for the inconvenience and the inadvertent error, but otherwise, we will continue the hearing on July 8 at 7:15. All right, thank you. All right, so our next hearing is not until 7:30, which is the, here is.
He had another meeting before this, so we'll be in shortly.
All right, so continuation of the Stowe Acres North Course Conference of Permit hearing, we had some 30. So I think we can take 15 minutes at least to discuss 98 Point Road, unless anyone has any other matters that need to be discussed beforehand. Okay. So just to recap. At the last meeting, May 6, 2026, the hearing was closed. And there's been a proposed draft decision on special permits that were circulated.
Michael, do you have an extra set of?
Can go run out and wrap it.
I went to the closet, it wasn't there.
Oh, just share copy.
Have you had any conversation with Mr. Nixon at all?
Your idea. Oh, I, I just got the plans from Dan's meeting near last Friday. I dropped them off on Tuesday to Michael and I thought I was pretty much all set with that. But he informed me to do it, I kind of already decided you weren't going to allow me to do it further. And, you know, we talked about coming up to look at the site and have a better call. If anybody's looking at the site, you know, it's like a small lot, I know that, I'm not happy about that, but that's what it is. So I wonder what we can do at this point.
So we can repost it and reopen the public hearing. Based on what is already applied, applied for.
We could. They're right, you know, play devil's advocate. This permit, this request has been pending since 363 days. It's in the exact same position that it was then. So, so with all due respect, sir, the public hearing is actually closed, so we can't actually take any more information at this point. So I'll sort of open up the board, I mean, we have, as I say, we've got two choices. We can either vote on the draft decision now or we can vote to reopen the hearing and schedule for a new date in July and pick a border left off.
I don't see what harm would be in reopening it, if there's more information. If he says he's ready to go, then let's reopen it.
Any other thoughts?
I'm finally reopening, reopening it if we have all the information we need.
Did we have all the material that we need to proceed? Because there was a list of things that we were looking for. And I don't know if we actually picked up the things that were requested of the applicant.
We have received a site plan. I've not done a detailed review of it yet. It looked to me like it had what was needed, but I have not yet done that thorough review that I do for any application.
Can the hearing just be reopened by motion or?
I don't know, I've never actually done it before. No, but we'd have to move to reopen it and then they have to repost it, notice the butters. Yeah, yeah, okay, kick it off again for July, so.
So it's like starting from new.
Well, well, it is.
From the procedural perspective, right, right.
I mean, one question I have, I have a problem with, there have been a situation for, is the fact that the application has been technically pending for a year. Like, what's the, what's the timeline by which?
There's no time limit for how long a special hearing, public hearing can be open. But once it's closed, you have to render a decision within 90 days.
Those people reopen it.
So if it does reopen, I, I don't have experience with that, but I would assume that we restart the, it's open until it's closed.
Well, I think if it's reopened, it's like a new ballgame, I think, you know, become new again, deadlines.
Well, right, it'd be a new application effectively, right?
It's a little, no.
Would not be a new application, the same application, but you're allowed to take more.
Literally, it's the same application, but formally, it's a new application, right, to brand new hearing.
No.
No, okay.
I mean, nothing's happened, so it's not like it's one of these where we've gone down the road so far, we're still at the start. We did, that's right.
To initiate another hearing, you need an application.
Yeah, but we're not asking to refile.
I understand that, I don't know the nuances, because I've never gone to one.
I mean, I didn't either, I'm talking to someone.
So we should just be clear about what we think we need to do, again, having to violate any particular rules intentionally or unintentionally. Yeah, I have no problem going forward, just to make sure we do it the right way.
I hope that we repost the hearing and for a meeting in July, what day is it? 8?
July 8.
At? 7:30.
30. We have a motion, second. Seconds. Any discussion? Hearing not, on favor of reopening the hearing for 98 Point Road and posting it and for the butters for July 8 at 7:30.
And Ruth isn't on this hearing.
Yeah, not on this one, so I'm not voting.
My bad, so I was saying, it doesn't make any difference.
Yeah, it doesn't make any difference from a voting standpoint, but I just didn't want to weigh in. I abstained.
In that case, I'll need the applicant to submit a form to the Board of Assessors and the associated fee for the additional butters list. It's about, I think, $25 to reopen or to get that list.
All right, so just going to get those and send it out again.
Yes, you can bring, you'll bring the list and the mailing labels to my office and I sent out the mailing for.
Okay. All right, very good.
Could you go through the, the plans, make sure that everything that you've requested is in there?
Yes, now that it's reopened, I'll do a thorough review of the plan and I'll email you with any questions I have, as well as I'll give those to the board.
And we'll schedule. All right.
Thank you.
Sure, all right, that, next, here is at 7:30. We have nine minutes or seven, whose clock open? Any other matters to discuss while we're waiting?
The, the issue about that executive session.
Oh, yeah, let's talk about that just real quick, so we need to schedule, there's been a request by outside counsel of an executive session to discuss two pending matters. I had asked whether or not it's interested in person or virtually.
Yes, it can be virtual, again, we just cannot record it so.
Question about that, if it's, I'm not up on all this technology, if it's virtual, does that keep it out from the public, so that it's a closed session?
It could be a closed session.
Oh, dogs, that's why I sent the letter.
No, 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 that's a fair question, you want to show someone can't just buy it right now, is that, so, yeah, okay.
And if there are other items you wanted to add that meeting, we can do an executive session and then continue and open it up to the public for regular.
Yeah. I always want to suggest, I thought it might be easier, plus it probably saves the $10, because then counsel can just call in rather than actually driving it. Unless, if someone's got a strong desire to have it come here in person, let's pull it out. Okay.
Let's go with that.
This one actually here.
For, for the universal one?
I would, I would likely stay here.
Okay, no, I just.
Oh, for the public media rules?
Yeah.
I, I don't believe.
Because in one time, we had to have the chair here and one other person, at least, I think, during the pandemic.
I can double check with counsel.
Okay.
I was also thinking about who should be there in terms of, in terms of the people that sat on those relevant hearings.
Well, on, on the new matter, it's all us. On the old one, I mean, at the end of the day, like, you know, I think we're all welcome and everyone's in, but should be, should be welcome, so.
It doesn't matter necessarily who's, who was on it, it's more the board asked now.
Right.
Okay.
The individuals.
Okay. A sense from councils to help us time looking for, I mean.
I think it should be briefly, 15, 20 minutes.
What was the hearing, the one that was? Presty and.
Yeah.
It was an appeal from the building commissioner that the board acted on. And the person who appealed it is appealing the decision and the property owners appealed the decision, so.
Those are very old cases.
Yes, they're from. They're from 2017, so.
Yeah. And seconds to be won, so.
It was on the driving way.
We're, we're not doing an executive session on that one. It's a combined case.
Okay.
Because the property owner appealed it and the person who did the appeal is appealing the decision.
Okay.
So it's a little complicated.
And we stayed out of it, basically.
Oh, I'm sorry, you know what, I read too quickly, you're right, that's exactly what it is, okay. So if you can get, Michael, you know, what, what time?
Seven, yeah, it'd probably be around seven.
Okay.
I got a few dates in already, so I will see what I can get the majority for. And I'll send them out to counsel and see what she can do.
Okay. For me, at least ideally, we can do it like that.
You can only do the subject that I think I'm on.
I was about to say, can we do the first three?
I remember.
Just got the coconut. So, okay, well, I guess we're looking at 17 to 18, so.
Do, I think, Andy probably knows the most about, he's been around through most of that, I know a little bit about it.
Do we need to actually formally do anything in order to schedule an executive session?
Yeah, okay, it seems the agenda posted.
Okay. All right. Okay, all right, otherwise, yeah, we've got a couple of minutes and then we'll turn it over to the.
Okay.
I have some information. Changes? No, you were on till Sunday? No, I mean. Oh, there's. Pilot information on you. It's already like to give to you beforehand. Talking about, I said I drank coffee, I don't know if you provided it.
One thing it didn't provide was the umbrella trust.
The umbrella trust is the only thing you didn't. Yeah. Takes a lot of trees to do something.
It does. You know, I make donations on the side because I kill a lot of them, but I'm doing it to the communities. Because I make it for you guys. Actually, it's not as bad anymore, so much as online. You know, dealing with 11 by 17s that I can tell myself instead of, you know, people taking, you know, they want 27 copies, so, you know. Hundreds, hundreds of dollars.
Long time to, on the fighting board, try to pay that back, just to get the new ones to be there.
Yes.
And then the other ones get the small ones that they want to look at, they, or just send a free, yeah, be present.
Right, and now it's the B and C. Yeah, I don't have, I don't have a 25 by 17. Just trying to get both here.
Say, tell me when I'm on the clock. What's that? I remember the McLaughlin.
Oh, yeah, years ago.
Yeah, I'm locked, yeah, I actually entered on that show. So it was really, it was interesting, you know, when I was, was in that, reminded of you, actually being like behind the cameras.
That would have been a new experience.
It was, it was, he was an interesting guy.
I see you're not in communication anymore.
I was in DC because of the, like, political stuff, so.
He was quite a character, I used to, I just watched.
Oh, he was. So, not bad for a Jesuit priest.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I would imagine off screen, he's pretty colorful character.
He spoke like a Jesuit priest, I mean, this whole way of, you know, reasoning, very.
All right, time being 7:30, we will now turn to continuation of the conference permit for Stowe Acres North Course. We have a bunch of materials from, from the applicant, I think it's been provided to everybody. And so I will turn it over to you to go in either one of two directions. We can either flag first, which is the, the new materials that you provided, just to give folks an overview. Or if you want to wait till the end and dive into tonight's topic, which is really about sort of corporate organization, I hate to say corporate organization, but really, you. Corporate organization, really the organizational plan for the.
I kind of have it in, I think, in in order for the first part. So I'll try to go through the in the in the order of the packet.
Okay.
For the board and and stuff. The last. Last hearing, we've been dealing with some, we'll say onsite mobility issues. There were some concerns and I. One of the big concerns was, you know, there was a little gap up here between where the intersection was. We've got wetlands on the back. We've got the island on the front. Try to figure out how to deal with that. There's a couple of other issues onsite. That the fire department, police department had. So we went with that. We took together some concepts. To deal with the four way line and then vet with fire and police to get there. Except it's sign off and I've got a couple of husbandhood issues as well. So I'll kind of go in the order of of what I have on the demo. But we'll hit everything on those issues that we have been talking about. As I said, there's this four way intersection that. They've often referenced the traffic analysis and reference. So we were able to make a change. We essentially pulled the road back a little bit. In the process, we changed the orientation of these houses. So before we kind of had a shared sign entry garage garage, so they were deeper, took up more space. So it's the same footprint that we have, but we'll end up having front loaded garages on those. The two benefits, it it takes up less space without using the 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 shared driveway spreading out aspect. You know, aesthetically, I don't love it, but I can live with it. And the other thing it did is it's the the depth of these homes, it doesn't go as close to the wetlands. And so that cuts down. We still need to do the more detailed design. But these homes may have, you know, may have walkouts. We'll eliminate all those. Not all of them were a good number of where we have retaining walls and stuff back there. So we felt overall, as it relates to just taking out some buildings there and added some stress to that section and that wetlands. We took out two units, shifted the orientation, shifted the drive to meet the the parking issues. So the one thing that we had to do, and, you know, the engineer had lots of different changes, is we relocated two homes back here. He come up with designs of putting them in here, here, and we're, you know, we're close to to the butters and we've really been working hard to to stay outside of that zone. So the the area that that we selected, you know, if you compare it to the. You know, to the the area where you can see the homes, it were really right back here where the screen is. So it's the, you know, sizable separation from, you know, the the people that have been here. And this is really, you know, heavier vegetation from what we have in some of the other locations, but it's it's tucked right back in this corner. So and there's also quite a substantial elevation drop from this house coming down to the back of them. So given the various options that we looked at, that seemed to be the, you know, the less intrusive. Of of the alternatives. Hopefully, the board will will be on the same one.
The shared driveway there, Mark.
We're coming with these, we're kind of extending through the shared driveway that existed on this one and on this one. So, you know, and those homes as well, because we've got wetlands behind it to limit the depth, we, you know, we tightened up those. So it'll be kind of a front loaded garage instead of the side for the ones in the back. So. So a little impact, but I think as as least impact as it could be. Overall, in in dealing with them. That got rid of the issue that we had the driveway coming in here and and there was a gap or it was a one way space and all that. On this, so this is still the emergency access. And what we agreed with fire and police is that this would be gated, but it would be an electronic gate, either controlled by a keypad or remote. They've done it both ways. We said, we'll we'll see what's the most efficient way when it comes. But so that'll be be dealt with there to deal with it. That was comfortable. We went, you know, they they had a number of street names that they weren't comfortable with because they interacted with things. The other thing that they wanted to do is. They wanted this main loop to have to have two names. So their concern was if somebody says, hey, I've got a problem at the corner of. Well, we got rid of Stowe Acres, so the whole thing was going to be the Maple Dale Drive. So if the whole thing was Maple Dale Drive, if they said, oh, we're at the corner of Maple Dale Dodge. Are we here or are we here? Which was valid. So we changed that. So we have Maple Dale Drive will be the loop up to St. Andrews. That'll be the transition. And then it'll be Oakmont Drive back down here. We we took out this name as a as a separate street. I thought that could be confusing and this will just be like one Oakmont Drive is an address that should be pretty straightforward. And we also, for the, you know, this, the the streets that have home on it, homes on it, like the frontage, those all became streets. And then, you know, lanes that are primarily targeted for, you know. Garage and access, we named them all lanes just to have some consistency. So that could work on it pretty straightforward too. Couple of the areas that they considered were were critical as it related to. Health and safety and access to homes was this area in here. And and this area back here. So what we did on both locations. We expanded this, what was going to be just a five foot walkway, that's a ten foot lane. And that'll be a fire lane. So emergency vehicles can go up to and access the houses as needed. We also did the same in here and we tied it in with Palmer Lane. So this, as an emergency access, they can, you know, there there's about thirty two feet, I think, from from porch to porch. So the same thing, that was just going to be a five foot walkway. That'll be a ten foot walkway. They can come in and they can, you know, they they have the ability to loop around. So that deals with front of all these homes and the lanes, like many of the other ones are are focused on garage and primarily as compared to particular visual houses. The other thing we agree with up here, but it's more of a of a condition, is to put together a detailed address plan. Just to make sure that that they're comfortable with it from health and safety. We'll work with the fire department, with fire, obviously, we'll go to the post office, make sure that everybody's on the same page. So everybody knows that this is fifty six Oakmont Drive, that this is, you know, whatever, C three or something we'll have on the left, even on the right. Term is. Yeah, all right, even on the left. So we're going to put together all that to make sure that they're comfortable with it. You know, we talked about, you know, other lanes and I know Ernie had had submitted some information. The 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 fire lanes, as it is, you know, there are some guidelines, but they're, you know, it's really generally up to the jurisdiction of the fire department. They're not etched in stone for one and two family homes. So for instance, if you picture a house, they say you can have a lane that's only, you know, a a driveway or a lane that's a hundred and fifty feet. You have private driveways that are four, five, six hundred feet that don't meet any of the standards. So their concern is, you know, do we have reasonable access to get to the homes? And here, where virtually everything, you've got multiple access to get to, whether it's the front where we've got streets, the back where we've got garage. Combinivation of other things. But we went through, we talked about all the locations and you can see he had sent the memo over that he's, you know, fire department, they're comfortable with the plans as we need it. Now, there was one thing on the memo about we're going to put together returning template. I know you had some questions about that. So that will be, you know, part of the of a, you know, the kind of the broader response at dealing with some of the peer review questions that. That the engineer will put together. But on the basis of of this plan between the emergency access, making the changes. And we talked about the potential for another access back here. And expanding these walkways, making them suitable for fire lanes. You know, there'll be details to ensure that those are load bearing and the specs will be incorporated to the plans. They were comfortable with this and are. But so and I got the memo this morning, which that's. So. So those are really the, you know, the site plan changes per se as it related to that if. You know, and so hopefully if the board is 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 comfortable with what we have, but really that I think the real the main change, which I'm I'm still not super happy with, but I didn't have any other alternatives is over here. And it 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 does free up some space there. But otherwise, you know, substantially, the, you know, the same layout, the same look and feel that we've had from the beginning. So I was happy with that.
The the gap.
The what?
The gap. There's a there's like a the gap.
Is that access? We talked about traversing across that.
There's wetlands here. You know, we can do it out here, but we're not far here either. So. You know, it it the 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 concern was really to free these up. This is an area that was pretty intensive and we're much closer. You can see where the wetland comes back here. So we tried to to balance that space as best we could to minimize the the conservation weapon related impact. You know, dealing with the houses. And so that's where we settled in on, you know, on taking out two. Again, we had alternatives, but we took out four and maintained the same stuff, but we were still going back. He convinced me that the grading, I'll be much happier with it this way at the end of the day. So. But this, again, it maintains the same look and feel. We get the red green that they're focused on. You know, we'll have driveways, it's vehicles that might be useful, but. But there's not much we can do about it if I had marked, we've been able to to get rid of it. If you remember from the previous plans, we always had a gap here. Because this was a tight spot. And then when we pulled some over here, we kept tightening it up and tightening it up. So this really kind of reverted back to close to what we had in the beginning. Before we started, you know, doing these minor tweaks to satisfy. So just aggressive. So this could be grass.
Okay.
Yeah, right now. Yeah. And, you know, when they get in a mental design, some of the rating could change a little bit. It could be, you know, one of the houses could move over here and there. But from a conceptual perspective, right now, I think that we will have some area. We will have, you know, just a little break, you know. If it's nice, we could do a park or something like that, but I don't. Right now, that's probably.
You're not going to add it to the lots next door.
Uh, I not. It's not my intention. So. And laterally, I don't think it's much for anybody anyway. So having a. Yeah, having a break to space. So I. But it's not a bad idea. I mean, theoretically, we could stretch these out, but the main thing we want to do was was to take some impacts off of here. And we were really weren't going to be able to do that without removing a couple of houses. So at the end of the day, that's that's what we settled in. But as of now, I expect that this will be substantially, as you see it, generally is great space with some, you know, potentially minor modifications. So.
How about the entrance, you know, radius of twenty five feet on the entrance?
Here.
Both emergency and the.
Yeah. He does. Yeah. Yeah, and he's kind of.
It's obvious for both there.
Yeah, and he'll he'll do a turning template as part of the resubmit of the plans that will show it everywhere he needs to. So. The next section, you know, we had, we had talked about kind of, I've had a running list of items to incorporate it into the plan, incorporate into some of the details. Some of these things were on the list that Michael put together at the last meeting. Everything that was on that list is on these lists. And we can run through it quickly and just kind of wrap off. Some of them I've done. I was asked to add the WRPD to the plan, which we did. Reference to the flood plans, which we will do, was removing the short path to the dock boat, which we will. Remove the clubhouse and the tank toilets, the proof, the conservation asphalt, which we'll do. Identifying areas for proposed garage for the multi family building. As well as the rentals, which we'll incorporate again. It's so dark.
That's a good job. Rather than writing to the whole list, I mean, my my question for you would be, is there anything on this list that is a concern for you?
No. No, I think it's all work. You know, some of them, I don't. We talked about a landscape and closer to some of some of the wetland zones from a practical sense. We'll do that in a much lower conditions. If, you know, if all that work kind of makes it down at once, so I don't think that would be for here. I do have the, you know, the landscape architect is going to do a a typical home and I'll have to do, you know, a couple of versions of the homes, which is something that the board requested.
You need an ounce of the water research protection district and no bylaw requirements.
I have that listed. Okay, that's further down in terms of some some detailing to to break that out. Which we will do, and I've gone through it with the engineer. I, you know, will, there's a whole peer review, which he made a comment of, you know, some detailed engineering stuff, none of which is concerning. Some of it. You know, it's all the backend data that they had to do to size the pipes that he wanted to see. So. As I had, you know, said before, I don't, I don't, I didn't want to be able to piecemeal and everybody getting plans every week. So. The the goal is that, you know, with this plan, with the comfortable level from the board. The the goal is to the for the next meeting, I have that planned revise, the full set for you guys with a comment response. To the peer review and any of these other comments that we're dealing with, that I'm using this as the checklist to say, that's all on here. We can go through it, point it out as needed. But a lot of them are labeled, it's just, it's a big plan that somebody notes on it. It's hard to see or something.
I brought up the water resource protection because it's a big deal in the last forty we went through.
Well, I wasn't involved in that.
Oh, that's true. That's true.
I don't know what you're talking about. So we are, Mark, we are, we are in it. This is. So I will, he, Paul is looking at it. Do it. So.
Just re- decides.
I'll make sure it's not a big deal. So otherwise, yes, so we don't have to do the whole list. But that is, I think, the the main items, it was really just kind of a catchall. For the things that we've talked about to make sure that we're in it. I matched it up to mine with the list that they had, added the other things that I have. You know, there there, you know, the period, there's quite a bit. There was waiver list that he talked about whether we needed or not needed. I, you know, and I, I, you know, I probably have two thirds of it, but we'll fish it up on the next month. So. All right, and we started to get into the comment. In your package, I included some information with some designs with the class, as people know. We've got, you know, two or potentially an accessory or something. But the, we've got the proposal for a clubhouse. We've also got a wastewater treatment facility that'll be relatively visible building. A couple of them aesthetically are important to make sure they are you. In your package, we have plans of the clubhouse design. Kind of keeping the five hundred, you know, modern clubhouse for natural has some.
Within thirty five feet elevation.
This, oh, yeah, yeah, this building, this is about twenty six hundred square feet. So this is all just on one level. This is really just to bring in light and volume. So, yeah, we'll roll through all that. Yeah. So the basic design, we've got a nice kind of entry foyer that goes into a common room and then out to a sunroom. That'll be for kind of, you know, sitting areas, tables, game rooms, etc. We've got a small kitchen off of that. Comfortable sized fitness room with access to a rear porch and bathrooms, showers and. You know, additional porch and the pool area will, you know, be kind of adjacent. We'll do, I don't think we'll do it behind. It'll be more like this location. But this gives a sense of the flavor of the design. Like I said, it's about twenty six hundred square feet. So comfortable size, not not crazy. The wastewater treatment building, really, you you see it, the orientation is here. I kind of. Explain your orientation a little bit with the sense that is picturing the house here, if you if you're driving along, whether it look like the side of a house. You know, a little bit front porch, we can put a couple of rocking chairs on it, like overlooking the pond here. And again, a gable, similar windows is to give it the sense of the small house to tax our obstruction. Simple, but works for the overall scheme, doesn't strain. This is where the bad stuff comes. So that's the main goal. And I I think design wise.
Label supervisor residences.
Yeah. I love that. So so those are the designs. If there's questions or concerns, certainly you can advise me as, you know, for the next meeting, but I thought it was, I'm happy with them. Hopefully you guys are. Then the next, we start dealing, you know, with more of some of that, you know, organizational stuff. So I just tried to put together a simple graphic that we've got. Up at the top, you know, we have. The umbrella trust, which really everything will flow through. They are, you know, are will be the overall kind of coordinating entity of the various parcels. Below that, we've got three things. And here we've got them designated, you know, the multi family, we designate that as parcel one. Single family dwellings, that's parcel two. And that has a homeowner's association to keep that information on as well. Parcel three is the cottage rentals and parcel four is the remaining open space that really isn't attached to anything else. So. These entities, really, the way it it. Th- these entities, really the way it it breaks down and the the percentage, say the percentage interest in the umbrella trust is is based on the projected flow, which corresponds to the number of units. I think the specific numbers is that a partial two, which is the single-family homes, is about seventy, seventy-six point seven seven.
Seven seven.
There we go. Yeah. This is, I think, four point six five. And then the cottages are like eighteen point five eight. So we've got a nice clean hundred percent. Um, and essentially that becomes the funding, you know, like a condominium, everything adds up to a hundred percent. You've got the budget and so on the budget. So, you know, uh, four point six five percent of the budget to operate the entire property will be paid by the owner of of this property, which will be a single owner, which likely will be me. Um, the cottages in the back, same thing. They represent uh eighteen and a half percent of the budget. If it's whatever, a hundred thousand dollars a year to operate this, then yeah, they pay eighteen percent of that. Uh, and then the homeowners association pays the bulk of it for obvious reasons, usage and area. Um, and then they would subsequently distribute the expense out, um, you know, in a hundred and twenty-four portions to everybody else. So here I kept the portions, uh, I kept a proportion within the homeowners association between the market and the affordable. Uh, the number is gonna be relatively modest. Um, you know, and, you know, having some people pay more than others long-term, it it can create a little bit of an issue. So um, so I'll keep them consistent, but we're looking at a budget that's probably a hundred and twenty-five dollars a month range for these people. So pretty reasonable um overall. You know, they may have uh some additional expenses depending on on flow and stuff. Uh, but for the most part, you know, the main expense will have obviously um, the the roadways, um, landscaping, clubhouse, um, water, sewer, significant expense that probably distributed amongst the amongst other people. We've got a couple of areas that, you know, this is technically common space that was in the zone. So, you know, that needs to be detailed a little more specifically. Um, and then the open space obviously will be overseen by um, the the umbrella trust. Uh, the umbrella trust is broken down with initially, you know, it will be, you know, I guess the developer on the initial trustee, the way it it works. Um, it's designated to have a total of seven trustees after um, five from here and one each from uh the homeowners association to deal with it. Of the, I mean, to uh from the the property owners to deal with it. The voting rights and the voting rights, but in terms of people that are getting together and talking. So, you know, the 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 single-family homes will have a significant voice on the operation of things in terms of how it's controlled. Um, since they're spending the bulk of the money. Uh, but I thought seven people was enough to get an adequate representation from um, from everybody uh to be able to be a well manager. Um, and I'm sorry, where is it? Is the seven trustees in the trust act? It'd be in the uh umbrella trust that makes reference to the trustees.
Yeah, I think I was skipping through next thing.
Yeah. You know, the homeowners, uh, the homeowners trust for the five trustees from there would be um elected to go in. And I think it's it's worth it for them. So it it really is somewhat of a, you know, kind of bottom up, single owner, single owner, multiple owners as part of an association that's voice ultimately is 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 one voice as the homeowners trust. Um. But generally, you know, the expenses will be distributed on that on that basis, which will establish for the company and the fees, whatever it is. You know, there'll be additional structures that need to be created for the public water supply and for the wastewater, the public water supply in particular. I think as as particular uh structures and how that ownership needs to be done, that we will dictate that. All of that ultimately would, you know, will come for you guys in the senior. That should be a condition for you guys to understand how that works. And um, I've done a community water supplies where it's it's predominantly been uh one entity. But when there's multiple entities, I know it changes the structure a little bit. So I haven't done that. Um, but it's common. You just, it's a water company instead of just being a well for the individual. So it's not irregular. I just haven't done it personally. So what I would um, so, you know, what I foresee is that, you know, there'll be the, you know, wastewater treatment permit and uh community water supply permit. Um, that that will be controlled by the, you know, by the trust. And um, uh, again, this, the expenses will will track it down in a portion of base.
The, if I'm reading this correctly, the turnover event, so you're being in charge of the overall trust up until the point where all one hundred eighty-nine units are sold. Is that right?
Yeah.
Okay. So just hypothetically, so one hundred eighty units, and there's that one unit that just can't move, like you're still running the show.
Uh, yeah, that's the way, that's the way it's structured that they buy. So I think in the homeowners trust, you know, condominiums, they put a, you know, they usually have a uh, uh, a transfer at seventy or seventy percent. Um, you know, with with these, you know, we have this in, as in like condominium, we have these are rights. I don't think they change. So I don't gotta go back and and talk with everybody. Um, it just gets, we get really cumbersome. So that's kind of what really why that, you know, why you stay in it as long as you do. So um. And again, theoretically, you know, these will be under a single ownership. So I, you know, it it's, it's just the way that, you know, I'm used to doing it from a condominium perspective. It's like variation on it, but essentially the same thing. And it it keeps it easier because, you know, things are changing so much as you're building. It's ongoing and it it doesn't mean that it's always perfect. If, when you run a construction and people are living there, it it's at at times people get frustrated with this stuff, but you, you know, everybody just needs to work through it. That's why people that get in early have a, you know, they should get a better price. It's, it can be challenging, even when everybody is doing a really good job, it can be challenging because it's just the nature of it. So I can't stand here and tell you that it's not gonna be any problems and no one's ever gonna come here and bitch that, oh, you know, this happened while I was living there and they were running construction. So I'm not gonna say that, but um, I I've dealt with the issue before and um, you know, we're gonna deal with it overall as best we can. There's been questions about phasing. It it's not really a multiple phase thing. Uh, what will happen is will, you know, the main loop of of the roadway, you know, that, the drainage, the wells, the stuff that 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 all needs to be done before one house can be conveyed. So really, this area will be prepped to be able to deal on most of the the lots as it is. Um, I don't anticipate dealing with the multifamily until I'm over the hump on single families. Uh, so when this starts, then that'll be done all at once. When these start, that'll be done all at once as well. So um, you know, if you wanna talk about it phasing, you know, from that sense of single family to the monthly family to the tax cottages, that's all, you know, that's all uh. I, you know, that's fine, but that's, you know, that's just the nature of the time of the work, the funding as things get going. So members are gonna wanna see me over the hump before they want money for other stuff. So um, that's just the way it'll work. So.
In in terms of the turnover, I was just starting to think, you know, we just have to think in terms of condominiums, for example.
Sure.
You know, the the ownership ones, obviously the rental ones, you know, will be turned over. There's tenants going back and forth. What about in terms of the ownership? Will the um, will owners be allowed to rent out, you know, what they own to to?
Uh, these, they own the homes. They're they're fee simple homes. So they're not, you know, they won't be restricted if they chose to. Um. Uh, you know, if the values aren't what I hope they are, I hope they can't afford to rent themselves. Uh, but it was be concluded. So people have an issue and they need to do, these are condominiums, so I'm not dealing with any may requirements or percentages.
I was wondering about that, yeah.
So no, we don't have any of that stuff to deal with. So these are, these are effectively small, fee simple lots that people own and can do what they wanna do. The affordable homes are restricted through the de-restriction and presumably through the regulatory agreement that that would limit that. So they can't rent them because they have a an economic benefit. And if they're not using it, that goes to the hands of another person.
Yeah.
Um, but the the for sale, it, I I wouldn't say it's restricted, but it's not gonna be encouraged economically. I don't think it'll be overly viable unless someone, you know, they're moving and it makes sense for a little bit. But I I I I couldn't see me being able to produce these homes even, you know, without making any money and having them to be, you know, economically viable as a rental. They need to be ten thousand dollars a month to use a race. She'll eat that one, probably more than that. Yeah.
Yeah. Hold on. I'm trying to make sure I'm reading this correctly. So for the homeowners trust, the one hundred eighty-nine units.
The umbrella trust or the homeowners?
The homeowners trust.
Okay, for the hundred and twenty-four units. The umbrella trust is above all.
Right, right, right. So for the homeowners trust. Um. You serve as trustee until either ten years after the first lot sold.
Yeah.
Or all the lots have been sold plus one year. Am I reading that right?
I think so.
Well, no, because there's this unique situation where in the umbrella trust, the turnover event is the sale of all the units. And yet in the homeowners trust.
It has a ten-year timeframe.
Well, no, there's a one, there's an extra one year.
Okay.
So that theoretically, you'd sell all the units, at which point the umbrella trust should turn over to the to the actual owners.
Okay.
Except for the fact that.
You're restricted for a year.
Except you get, you get an extra year even after the sale.
Okay.
So so that that's a bit of.
Well, that's fair. Well, it's inconsistent too, as you, as you're saying.
Well, that's right. Yeah, 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 yeah.
Yeah, so I can clarify that.
Yeah.
Yeah. Uh, so I think they married it to.
Yeah, the two no point jive. Yeah, because otherwise, not the same as this was intentional. I don't think it was. Um, is that it sort of builds in this moment where you're like, the turnover event is recurring. We're turning it over to the trustees. And yet you still have an extra year. So just, you may wanna talk to council about that.
Yeah, and I believe I'm not gonna want it next year.
I would say I wanna be punished for another year.
And because it's it's it gets complicated. Because even, you know, with this, what I've done in some other properties is that we've created resident, you know, resident management groups and uh, to to start dealing with some of the issues even before the turnover. Because it's it's just a lot of people and they have a lot of questions. So um, you know, so there's, there's a, there's a good reason for me to either be out of it or if I'm not out of it because of the regulations from the way it's structured that at least have people that are involved that are dealing with the issues that are more relevant to them than to me. Um, you know, I I'll have enough to deal with. Somebody complaining about a dog or something like that, I don't really wanna be involved with. So that's where we try to pull some people in that are uh interested, motivated, and, you know, happy to have any of this level of rate.
And from my experience, just from a condominium standpoint, would have the developer in there for as long as possible.
Well, it has people that concern. I mean, here, you know, particularly with the, you know, a a project that I did recently, we, you know, wells were a pain in the butt. It was a relatively small project. So we stayed in it and at, you know, substantial time and energy and expense just to make sure that everything is is fine before, you know, before we leave. And that's where, you know, you know, in a smaller project, you don't have that much time from the beginning to the end to, you know, for there to be problems to play or for them to be resolved and to realize you have no problem. So in here, given that timeframe, I think all of those facilities, you know, the 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 well system, the wastewater treatment facility, you know, the septic systems and well distributions, that's all gonna be well-established and mature. So we're not gonna have any growing pain with it or any problems. So I think that when it is the case to leave, that I I think everything will be will be pretty well-established. Because even, you know, best case, as I said, it's gonna be four years that we're working out here if things go reasonably well. So.
You have an experience and for them, it's gonna be like a growth transition.
It'll be, yeah, it it is. And whether, you know, if they hire a third-party management, so it's, you know, all that stuff can be decided with their involvement and. Um, so, you know, these, this is a a starting point. There'll be rules and regulations and those types of things that that need to be developed. But at least, you know, we start setting up that foundation and things can be conditioned that the final ones come back to the board, that you guys see it to make sure it's consistent with your plan. So there's no questions on that from mine.
This is a problem for the town. Now, you've got separate rules on what our town has. We don't, this is a non-conforming lot, non-conforming everything.
Yeah.
How we're gonna handle things as far as, first of all, we need the association to approve of it. Then the zoning board right now would have to approve any change.
Well.
Want to make the house, not that they have a lot of rate changes.
That's not how I look at it.
Okay.
I look at it that what we've established with the waivers is a new list, is a, is a, is a, a new set of rules for this. You know, they've got different zoning requirements. They've got different sideline offsets, front yards, backyards, all that stuff. So they don't need to come to you if they wanna make any changes. They've got a building box. If they stay within that building box, it's a, it's a, it's a building commissioner issue, just like it is on any house in town. If I wanna add a sun porch or a porch, I I've got, I gotta be thirty feet from here or five feet from here. Those are the rules. I, the way that these are structured is that they would get approved locally. I mean, locally meaning by the association to make sure it meets the same standards and guidelines, but then they would go to the building department. I I know, I don't look at this that they need to come back to you for anything. That, that's a lot. No, I that, I think it's important for you and I think it's important for the residents. This is a lot that has offsets and requirements, just like any other lot in town. They comply with those. They should be, if they get a building permit. If they don't, there's no reason to, but they have requests to you if. But that's the same dynamic as you have on any other subdivision.
What you're saying. You gotta come down to the commissioner himself.
Yes.
Yeah, we've had some who, I mean, much more aggressive than others to say, can everything stay there.
Yeah, and I think here too, from a practical set, these are small ones. So you're not gonna have people that are gonna come in later and say, oh, I wanted you all these.
Then all forward.
So, so, you know, it it conceptually, I think it's important that everybody's on the same page of how it's envisioned to operate. From a practical sense, I think there'll be less, much, uh, many fewer changes, expansions, modifications here than you would have on a traditional subdivision, just given the nature of the, given the nature of the property. And, but that's, I don't think, I I I absolutely don't have expectations that people would need to come to you if they wanna do that. That's crazy.
Yeah.
You guys, you guys are way high paid for that.
That's true.
Uh, the uh, the the thing where you have the the graphical image of the of the organization. On the bottom there, you have responsibilities broken down by the different parcels.
Yeah.
I'm just curious as to sort of how that was, how that, how you came up with that.
Uh, really just, uh, you know, as originally, I had more on the association. And then as I'm going through it, I'm like, no, that's not an association expense. The roadway is not a homeowners association. That's that's an umbrella association because it affects everybody. The clubhouse, that's an association. That's not, uh, I mean, that's an umbrella. That's not it. So from a practical sense, people have, you know, their homes and their, you know, their related landscaping. Um, you know, but the roadway sidewalks, that's all gonna be maintained by by the, you know, by the umbrella trust. So when it comes down to the individual homes here and here in particular, uh, you know, we've got parking issues, we've got dumpsters, we've got, you know, EV and that kind of stuff that we've talked about. But otherwise, it really is the bulk, the vast majority of items uh kind of purposely is underneath the umbrella as compared to the to the different ownership structure. So, you know, we'll have insurance issues here and needs for this building as far as liability and here, and we'll have an overriding policy. But, you know, unlike a condominium, we're not insuring homes.
Yeah, it was exactly right because the insurance had popped out to me.
Yeah.
Because it makes sense for parcel one, you know, insurance. I couldn't, I would have assumed it would have been parcel three and possibly the trust as well for the.
Oh, and yeah, well, yeah, for the apartments that, yes, they would have to. And I may, I just.
No, no, I just wanted to make sure I was by this example.
Yeah, yeah. But yeah, really, the vast majority of items are under the umbrella trust for the overall maintenance. Um, you know, the overall drainage, um, you know, we've got individual drainage on the lots for these homes that that that's, that's, that's residents. That's not common. That's on their property, just like, like anybody would have it. So. So you guys can take a look at it. Any questions and comments? We can look at them again next week. And we have one more item in the package that I don't know uh how Michael has addressed, but we have uh uh some residents um in town that had approached me and it's a, it's a circumstance that I've not really been directly approached about, but I you know, I have some friends and and family that deal with uh some uh some similar situations and and thought that this was really uh potentially a need app. One of the things we've been talking about in the site that I I'm really happy about the site is that, you know, we've got such a range of housing that it it will kind of reflect the whole community. Um, and so we've got, you know, single-family homes. We've got stuff for people that are sixty-two plus, things for rental, um, you know, a broad range of people that we're trying to help. Uh, you know, there are the some people that have intellectual and other disabilities that that are on that. You know, there are some people that have intellectual and other disabilities that, that are on that list and have various options. So the broad concept of what we've been talking about and, and hope can, can, uh, make some comments specifically about the program. But what we're looking to do is we, we've got thirty one affordable single family homes. It's a lot of homes. That, that, that's not going to be the last for residents, I can guarantee that. So what the concept is, is could we take potentially two of those homes and that are together and utilize that to make a, a small structure that could be suitable for people with disabilities. We've had initial conversations with Michael and Valerie just to get feedback about how the town felt about it. Uh, I know Denise has, we've, we've talked with her as well and, and she was supportive. We've had a couple of conversations with the HCD as well, and we think that we can make it work from a program perspective. Part of the problem, what happens as well, we've got, you know, a, a guaranteed permit, twenty five percent needs to be afforded. If we don't do it, it'd be affordable and if it's a different population, does that affect the guidelines? You know, we're, we're certainly going to be dealing with people that need the guidelines. So we know that there's the potential that, um, you know, I, I mean, from my end, from a developer end, I, you know, I think this, this, we can manage the structures to have the local field to be consistent with what we're doing. Obviously, we need to cluster some affordable homes, which I don't think the board would have an issue with. From a funding perspective and how it could work out, DSS will need to be involved. You know, they will have several hurdles and we can have them talk to you about that a little bit more specifically about the need and the goal of it. But at the end of the day, what I would be looking for, comfortable with and seeking the board to do is if we could have a condition that could allow for this subject to, you know, meeting these other, um, program details and, um, different department stuff. There's, there are some hurdles. This hasn't been done in Massachusetts yet. But I've always considered, the forty B is just this, it's this really cool toolbox for a town. If you use it right, you can do things that you otherwise couldn't do anywhere else. And it seems like a good, uh, good application for it. So I'll explain it a little in more detail in terms of who would help with the structure. It's all right. Uh, that's your team now.
So, thank you, Mark. Um, so I'm Hope and this is my husband Cole. Um, this is Andy who works for Minuteman Arc. But Cole and I are business owners in Stowe. Um, his family's owned a business in Stowe for over seventy five years. We are also the proud parents of two children. Um, our daughter Madison would greatly benefit from the model that Mark is referring to, which we call a micro unit model. It is made, um, the goal is to allow people with intellectual disabilities to be able to leave their homes, um, be away from their parents, continue to work on increasing their independent skills, but having support in the unit that they live in. So, um, as a parent, I started looking, my daughter Madison, our daughter Madison is twenty five, and we started looking at housing options about a year and a half ago. And, um, there are such few options for adults with, um, intellectual disabilities. Eighty, so eighty five percent of the adults, fifteen percent of adults with intellectual disabilities are priority one. That's funded by the state. That's a lot of people are familiar with group homes and they're funded by the state. But that's fifteen percent of the IDD population. Eighty five percent parents like ourselves, no funding from the state. You have to figure it out on your own. So you either figure out the road, you take huge risks. Or what we have learned is that twenty five percent of adults with, um, IDD stay in their homes with their parents or caregivers until the caregiver can no longer take care of them. And then what happens in that situation, we get too old, we can't take care of Madison anymore. The state comes in and places her in whatever bed is open. So that would be very hard for any of us, but for someone with, um, IDD, who don't really fully understand what's going on, to put them just in a bed that's open in Massachusetts without people who know them, without the support. I mean, she has been loved and cared for her entire life. And to just dump her in that situation would be devastating for her. So when we're looking at options and finding that there's not a lot of options, I started working with Andy at Minuteman Arc about a little over a year ago. And Andy brought, um, to our attention the micro unit model that other states are using and lots of states are starting to consider. And what it really does is it takes that Mark was explaining is, you know, to take a house and you would put, I think, and there's the size houses that we're talking about, probably three micro units. And a micro unit would be, um, a bedroom, a bathroom, um, and a little living area and a small kitchen. And we're talking kitchenette, kind of like a microwave and a refrigerator, nothing that they could.
Four to six hundred square feet.
Yep, yep, yep. And then they have like a little central living area to kind of have friends over, whatever. And then there's also common space. So there's a central kitchen where they could all, they could cook and build, continue to build more skills and like a family room where they could watch TV and, um, and socialize. And so that model, um, and then there would be also a unit where support and woodland, we'd have what we call a safe neighbor who would be living there, um, all the time, twenty four seven, but wouldn't be responsible just at night for them. And then we also have people that would be in support during the day. Minuteman Arc, um, is an amazing, uh, place for my daughter to attend to a program as well as she works. She actually works in the town of Stowe. But they would be the ones timing the support. They would be the ones also maintaining the homes and taking care of everything that, um, needed to be done as well. So this micro unit model, um, would give people like our daughter and so many people the opportunity to continue to grow their skills and continue to be independent and also have the experiences in a full life, like exactly what we want for our son, exactly what everyone wants for their, their children. And the micro unit model solves a lot of those issues and really gives them the opportunity to do that. So, um, Mark, Michael, Valerie have been unbelievably supportive about this. And we would, there was such a tremendous need, I can't even tell you how much of a need there is. We started, we started meeting, uh, like about a year ago. And we started a group of people that, you know, were interested in this. We went from nine families when we started and now we're up to fifty eight families. So we just had our twelfth meeting this morning. And it's unbelievable how much we've grown. Every time I talk to someone or Andy talks to someone and people are like, oh my God, I don't know what to do. You know, we have any housing. And we tell them about this model. People are just like, oh my God, finally something that makes sense and something that would actually, we can be excited about, would actually help, um, give them a full and happy life. So that's what we've been working on.
Wonderful. Um, question from the, you know, ownership financial standpoint. I mean, who would own these units that we are?
That would be Minuteman Arc.
Yeah.
The idea being that for some individuals, there may be an opportunity to continue to develop their independent living skills and maybe they can move on. So it's a rental model for the residents and a portion of model for the.
I say, and. I was just asking one more thing. Who would be paying the rent? Be the families of the clients?
Yes.
For the individual.
For the individual, yes. Yeah, we'd be renting from Minuteman Arc.
And the state won't give you any financial support for this?
So not if you're not priority one. And so what you have to do is you have to learn a lot and, but they do qualify, which is what Mark was talking about in terms of, um, the affordable housing, they, they do qualify for a section eight vouchers because I'm never going to be able to make enough money that they couldn't even sustain anywhere, um, in our state. So, um, the section eight voucher with that, um, there, the, the resident is only responsible for thirty percent of their income and the voucher pays for the rest. So that's how they would afford it. And we have, um, also some other supports that would be helpful too.
Willing resources to make it financially sustainable over the long term.
Yeah, 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 we have, we actually.
So this would be taking one of the currently designated affordable u- units and converting it into one of these micro units.
So the two units is all we're talking. Okay, so we have enough space to make it, you know, to make, to make it work. Yeah. So instead of thirty one affordable homes to go up by lottery, you'd have twenty nine. And, and the state was getting bought down. They're like, well, you're trying to get a, we can't count them twice. I'm like, no one really gives a shit about coffee right now. We're trying to say we can do it.
Right, 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 right.
So if we can do it, that's great. And if the population is, uh, it meets the standards and the structure does, then ultimately, I think the town will get the benefit of more affordable units. But that wasn't the, we're trying to get it across to them that that wasn't the focus so that the count, we're not, we're not worrying about the count, right?
Right, right. We're trying to convert two affordable units into like six.
Exactly.
It's like, we'll take our two and then, you know.
I mean, two would be great to start off. And the thing that would be nice about two is that we could share resources in terms of staff. So if someone was out, they could cover, you know, both houses and we could share.
That's what I was gonna ask. Would it, would it be a, um, uh, the, the live and support person, would there be two, one in each house?
There'd be one in each house.
Okay.
One in each house.
Yeah, and I, I think the scale of what fits and how many units, I, I, I think that's to be determined. Like if it's one structure with this or if it's one larger structure that, I, so I, I think there's some flexibility on how it's done. That's why I think having, having two, we, we know we're going to have probably, whatever, three to four for one structure. If that works, then we could do two of them together and, and have them related. That could be wonderful. If it's one, you know, one larger sprawling structure because it's predominantly one level.
Yeah.
And, and, and we need the two lots to do it, then, you know, that's okay. So I, I think, you know, there's some flexibility in terms of works. There obviously there needs to be a financial model that makes sense of having enough scale or not too much scale. But, um, so I, I, that can be resolved. But the thinking was taking two lots, put them together and, and, and see what, what works, uh, in a little self-contained spot. And whether that's for three or four or five or six, we can determine it as we get further along.
Okay.
So you're just really looking for guidance.
I think, I wouldn't say guidance. I think right now what we're looking for is the, if the board is comfortable with the concept, we'd be looking to incorporate a condition that allows for the flexibility to do this should these other steps, um, come together. And if there are particular concerns from the board of, you know, what, any particular concern that you want to see as a step, that that's incorporated into this decision. But I think it's going to take a little while, you know, best case, to, to put together a framework that works. So essentially, what we'd like to do is have a, a placeholder in the decision for this with a concept that we've discussed, that we're hearing support from, there's been support from other aspects of town. So if we can pull this together, it works within the permit and we don't need to come back and, and, you know, go through the whole thing and, and try to change it. And getting it to work within the D, uh, DHCD guidelines is, that's going to take a little, it's going to take a little effort. But they were, they're going to talk with, with Kate Racer as the head of the department. And, you know, and everybody that talks about it thinks it's a wonderful idea. They, 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 there was a, a, you know, an interest in making it work. So I think we can make it work. It'll, it'll just take time. Anyone that's dealt with state with new HCD, there's nothing goes quickly. So.
Is, I'm saying this with the assumption that we can't do this, but I'm just asking. Is there an opportunity, and Hartman, I agree with this, is there, is there an opportunity to prioritize? Like who gets those slots to, you know, keep it within Stowe or Stowe neighborhood communities? Or like, I'm just throwing that out there. Especially, I mean, it's one of the, I mean, I'm being selfish, I'd be perfectly blunt by saying like, you know, if, if this, if, if the town, which has already been very supportive of this, it would be great to set it up in such a way to benefit.
Having a local preference for these, like I have it for the other lotteries, is not an unreasonable request. It's, you know, it's, it's based on, uh, availability if they're there, they can meet standard if it's. So I don't think that's an unreasonable request. Um, so.
No, no, we're just trying to balance different, you know, the, the qualification and the families are working together, trying to create that partnership.
Yeah.
Where their, their children get along, the families get along. So that's, we balance it with that as well. But certainly no reason, and, and ideally, these would be Minuteman Arc clients as well.
Well, that's actually.
We have the bands coming through Stowe every day.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. That, that's what I was asking. There was going to be preference for those who are already Minuteman Arc.
Those who are already serving, yes.
Right.
Or, yeah, recipients of your services. Fifty eight families right now. So it's, you know.
How many residents would be in this, in this proposal?
Could be three, could be six. So, you know, it's a relatively small number, but as you said, you know, it's, I'm sure important. So.
It was also breaking the ice. Hopefully this would be a model that can grow.
Yeah, absolutely.
So this is just a thought. You already have potential buyer. Does that violate any of the rules of lottery about how lots are going to get?
Those are the, those are the issues with the HCD that we're working out. That's exactly it. We have an obligation to provide twenty five percent of these homes as affordable. Under this scenario, you can argue we are, or you can argue we aren't.
Yeah, it just strikes me.
But it's a different.
Said, oh, that's my spot already. I got it.
Right, that's exactly it. So that is, that's the crux of the issue with the HCD. That we've, we've, we've had two meetings with them. I, and they, they understand what we're trying to do now, which they didn't initially. And, and they, they felt that they, from a program perspective, they thought that they could find a way to make it work.
Nice, okay.
They may not, but that was their initial.
Sure.
After some conversations, they felt that they could make it, um, make it work. So, but they wouldn't do it without local support. So, and, and if we only had six affordable homes, I don't think that they'd support it. I don't think that the board might support it. But we, we've got a lot of.
The scale.
And I, you know, I think it's a, a good use for a couple of them. And ultimately leveraging those two to hopefully help, you know, five, six, seven, uh, families as well.
Maybe even increase the number of potential residents, the number of houses, uh, homes as well.
A, a number of housing units theoretically, yeah, yeah.
Maybe even beyond five or six, maybe even ten.
So I get crazy. But that's the, that's the goal that we wanted, to top of the board, see if there's a, a willingness to support it and to create, uh, a condition or two that will last for it. So.
Maybe we should, at some point anyway, take some kind of a vote, just to formally, you know, decide whether to endorse the idea. Doesn't have to be endorsing a specific proposal, but just to give them, um, you know, some indication, you know, if we're going to support it.
I can see from the faces that there's support candidate.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, yeah, I don't think.
I think, you know, I think I can work, Michael and I, we can work on a condition.
Right.
And I think that is, is something that the.
Give us an additional put in.
That's reasonable.
So, yeah, no, I, I think it's a fantastic idea. And for full transparency, my daughter used Minuteman Arc way back in the day for a little intervention. So, uh, so it's a great organization. But, um, yeah, I would definitely encourage you to work with town staff on language. I guess I'd love to see a little preference in there if possible. But again, we can agree. You know, but, yeah, I think that sounds, uh, probably an excellent idea. So I can generally lose consensus.
Several Stowe families and it was always to keep them from coming here. He said, we want people, and I said, that's. They're all really nice people. They've got to be supported. So it's not a reason to feel like we're a gang, you know?
Oh, I, I, I have no doubt troubles. We're going to come out to the golf course tomorrow.
I think the demand is much higher than.
Yeah.
So with that, and I go, we've been here for a while. I go through my backpack. What, um, I was looking at my next steps, uh, I think is consistent with the original stuff that we set up is that, um, really consolidating everything that we've talked about with that list of, of ideas. Having the engineer update the full plan set to reflect these changes. Incorporate a bunch of the different details for peer review and the weapons resource protection directive. That the last one would be the crazy step on, if we want to. So there's, uh, you know, there's a laundry list of more technical items that we were going to address and look to push to have those. Paul thought that he could have things ready for, uh, for the next meeting, which is in about a month. So we've got a plan to go through it in more detail, I think on Wednesday or Thursday. So, um, that's the goal, to try to get all of that in front of you. And I don't know if, if any time has been spent on starting to prepare permits or anything like that. If I could work with Michael to try to make sure that we're incorporating stuff that, that makes sense, that's reflective of this list. If you have that in your life. But ideally, we could try to get a set plans, comprehensive set of plans. And a draft permit with conditions reflecting this, uh, circumstance as well. to start having some, you know, have, uh, something tangible, um, in front of the board to look at, to review. And as I said, I think the 24th of July was the, the targeted date, I'm not worried about that, there's a lot of stuff we're gonna be dealing with, so. You know, if we're working through stuff, that's the least, it's the least of my worries, it's been three years, so another, another one isn't gonna affect me too much.
Right.
So that's, I think, what was contemplated for the next meeting, that was what I would be, um, working to provide, um, if that's acceptable to the board.
Before I open it up to the board, I just wanted to give town staff an opportunity to weigh in with questions or thoughts about either these topics or any items. If, if you don't, then that's okay.
I don't, I just wanna go over some scheduling things.
Okay, so, um, so I, I will actually just take a moment to, um, if any members of the public uh, have anything to weigh in on about what's been discussed tonight, either in corporate ownership or the, um, uh, the, uh, the micro-voting proposal, uh, I'll open it up to anybody here in person. Anybody online? Oh, I'm so sorry.
In terms of the legal.
If you just state the name.
I'm sorry. In terms of the legal documents, I haven't had a chance to see them, but it strikes me that for the recreational trail that connects with the town property, that the town would probably wanna have some kind of an easement so that we knew that a member would have the right to use it in the event that someday the trust said, no, no trespassing. And that maybe.
Well, I'm gonna be the trustee, you gotta be really nice.
And I don't know, Mark, and you can talk more about this, but through your chair, but, you know, things like maintenance and.
Yeah, 'cause we, that's something we had planned to talk about, but we haven't, so why don't we plan to do that before the next meeting, have specific stuff for the board?
No, I appreciate that. Any other comments, questions from folks here?
Sorry, I think some crossky town administrator, uh, I know Mark mentioned that I have been, we've been having these conversations. I have actually met with Minuteman Arc on other projects in town. Uh, so from the town perspective, we are very supportive of this, I think it's a great concept, I think it's a great proposal to include in this development. It really is a one-of-a-kind development anyways, this would just take up another notch, um, and really be a model for the state on how you can do sort of mixed income and mixed residential properties, so I just want to offer my support.
Thank you. To, if there's anyone on, on, via Zoom, uh, members of the public, if you have any questions or comments or issues that you wanted to bring up with respect to the topics that we've been discussing this evening, so raise your hand, and Michael will call in. I'll take silence as gold. Okay, uh, any other questions or issues or comments from members of the board on any of the topics tonight?
Good, thank you for also.
Okay, so, um, why don't you go next?
Yeah, I just wanted to go over quickly, just to set everyone's expectations for the upcoming schedule. Um, the next formal meeting that we're having is July 8th. We haven't set a time yet for it, but it'll be after the other two public hearings. By then, I sh- I'm hoping to have a draft decision written, I've started already, we're seventeen pages deep so far. So we have that, uh, July 24th is, uh, the statutory time that we would have to close the public hearing. I will be out of state on vacation on the 24th of July. So I would appreciate either, just starting a discussion of maybe extending the public hearing to August 5th, which is the next week, or.
It's two weeks.
Two weeks, one. My math is off.
These are gonna be good.
Pushing it back two weeks, or we could put, schedule another meeting before I depart. Cause I would prefer to be here if something happens on the 24th. I think we all would, Michael, so, uh, I mean, if we plan, I mean, can we make a decision on the 8th, how much more time we need? Or is there, I don't know.
Is the 8th the next, would be the next scheduled day?
The 8th is the next scheduled day, and that's just final questions, comments.
What's your, July, that's July.
Or tonight.
And we're gonna get his plans at that time, so we need to go over those plans and comment on them, so we haven't, have to have done to me, just.
I, I'm, I'm, I'm not concerned, I'm not, really not concerned about the fact that it all, so.
I'm just saying, we're not finished, and then we got more.
I consider they're great, yeah. So I, yeah, if we can, if we have a draft permit and a set of plans for the benefit of the board on the 8th, we can have a conversation about it, obviously the details of the details. And then from then, I would say we could set a time at that point, understanding it certainly would be on 24th.
What's the, um, do we have, do we have an August meeting, or the 5th?
August 5th, it's on the schedule, okay.
That will be the normal.
Do we have anything on that day?
Nothing scheduled, nothing yet. If you wanna tentatively plan for that, and, you know, I can do an extension at the next one, but at least we have a, a next target date, I'm, I'm fine with that, if that works for everybody, you back? Are you back by that? Yes.
Okay, yeah.
You're gonna be relaxed, so you're gonna be good? Hopefully, I'll be gone ten days. So, okay, if we wanna look at the 5th instead of the 24th, I'm perfectly fine with that, and if you wanna prepare something for the next meeting, I'll sign it then.
Yeah, so otherwise, just a reminder for members of the board and for members of the public, July 8th is our next meeting, uh, next scheduled meeting to discuss the comprehensive permit, um, we should have a new full set of plans, have all the outstanding issues addressed. Ideally, a potential draft decision, but, um, originally it was also scheduled to essentially be sort of a catch-all for any topics that we need to revisit, any topics that we may have missed. So if there's something, so I would just encourage for any member of the public, the extent that there's an item that you've not addressed over the course of the last, I mean, we had five, I don't know, we've got a lot, uh, the course of, of the months that we've been doing this, if we think we've missed something or we haven't addressed it in full detail, um, frankly, I would actually encourage you to email Michael and let us know what that is and get, let us know ahead of time, so then we can make sure we address it, then, uh, take them on. With that, unless any other members of the board have anything else to say, I will take the motion.
And will we continue the meeting July 8th at 7:45?
Your motion with the second discussion, hearing none, on favor, all right? All right, thank you very much, we'll see you on July. All right. We're a few minutes behind, but we'll keep on going. So, yes, I'm sorry.
Mark's the talker, so, you know, we need to hold one up.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So, uh, so we'll call to order the hearing, um, for a special permit modification for 19 Crescent Street.
Motion that you read, the reading of the motion.
Your motion, we have second, any discussion, hearing none, on favor. We have, is Ruth still there? Yes, she is, excellent. Oh, actually, do we need the same group that handled, nope, okay.
How was my question, do you need the same group? Cause I wasn't on this one.
Nope.
Okay.
Nope, nope, you're, you're, you're right to the fun of this one. So, um, all right, so we have before its modification of special permit for 19 Crescent Street, the, um, renovation rebuild, I recognize it, of the rental, uh, library. I will, uh, give the update before, just a moment afterwards, um, we will, uh, ask questions, write any comments. As a reminder, any questions or statements by individual board members should not be taken as a decision or any opinion of the board, uh, that is only rendered when an actual decision is voted upon, um, and, uh, an issue. Afterwards, I'll open it up to any members of the public, would like to make any comments, issue of questions. Such comments and questions should be directed to the board, the applicant is obviously welcome to respond, but is actually not required to use. With that, I'll turn it over.
Thank you, um, and for note, I have members of the team are all on Zoom, um, I was the only one who wanted to stay till 8:30 to be here. So, thank you all, uh, as we noted in the project's narrative, the updated narrative, uh, we went out to bid on this project last fall, um, all of the bids came in significantly over budget. The library building committees went back to the drawing board, we started to change the project, we decreased the square footage, we removed things, we changed the landscaping, um, to come up with a project that we felt was still in, um, in tune with the votes of the town, still met the criteria of the staff of the library, the patrons of the library and the town needs. We got some, we had two estimates that had the project coming in within our budget, uh, we will back out to bid in April, I think now, um, and we are now moving forward with ordering a contract. The project has been downsized since we came in before you last fall. Um, the building square footage now actually is in the existing footprint of the current rental library. So it will be smaller, but it will still be more functional than the cart structure, and it will be fully able to buy in all the infrastructure, all the utilities will be fully operated. So this is a request to look at the new, uh, plan. Uh, again, we made some modifications to landscaping, um, not much in terms of utility work. The set of, the setbacks have, I guess, improved, um, it does affect some of the parking and positively impacts the drainage and stormwater based on the new building footprint. So I'm happy to answer questions, I could turn it over to Ben from Design Lab, if you'd like more in-depth on our modification.
I just have a question about, my recollection was, it was an issue with one of the abutters in terms of access to the property and tree removal and all that, is that all been reconciled as well?
So there was never any issue, we just had, we had, um, we met with Mr. Moriarty and talked about the trees that we were going to protect.
Yeah.
That's all still in place. The building, um, really, there won't be many changes to his side of the project other than we're eliminating the parking that, uh, he was actually concerned with anyways on Crescent Street. Uh, the building will less, will infringe less on his property line, uh, than the new addition than the original one did, uh, or the proposed first structure did. Uh, so we don't see any impact, um, any, any worse than it was, it's actually.
Relationships are still intact, everything's gonna work, okay.
Yeah, we have no issues.
The air handlers are being removed from that side of the, the library, outside.
The air handlers were going to be moved anyways, they weren't gonna be on that back.
Okay, so it's, you gotta, just complete, uh, path there, except for you have a, something down towards the parking area.
Yes, and then the existing bumpout, which is like a little brick, I don't even know what it was, wall, that's all coming down, that slanted wall, so that actually improves the boundary between the two properties.
Thank you. So as you got parking, why don't you consider the old fire station's parking as part of for the, uh, library?
We do.
Okay, cause it wasn't mentioned here, that's.
It is, it's, it's listed as parking that there's on the municipal parking that was discussed the last time around. We just didn't wanna include it as specific to the site itself. Yeah, so we didn't, we didn't mention it for the site because it won't be on the actual parcel, but yes, the municipal lot across the street will, will formally be designated library overflow or municipal parking.
One other thing on parking, ADA parking, what, what does the code require for ADA parking?
One.
Just one, okay.
One for every twenty-five spaces, I think it is. Well, we would have more anyways because we will have them at the former fire station, but on the parcel itself, or right now, we're planning one, potentially a second one, um, on Common Road if need be.
So you're gonna have, uh, continue a lot of parking on Common Road?
Yes, yes, it will be more defined, our plan is to have, when the road is, so the road, we're actually scheduled, I'm glad you're here. Um, we're actually planning the temporary fencing, I think they're gonna try and set it up the end of this week. Uh, and that will formally shut Common Road down, and then they will start staging and ending the demolition, and, uh, this first round is asbestos removal. So when the project is not in Common Road is open, it will be formally a one-way, the select board did vote that. Uh, and at that point, we will then have more defined and actually defined parking along one side of the road versus now where people just sort of casually park where they want in either direction.
So in terms of numbers of square footage, um, what's a square footage now, and what will the square footage be with the addition?
So I mean, you've been, then, the kind of the proposed square footage is gonna be 7,730. It's slightly less, I think, than the existing square footage, um, but then the usable square footage is different, we'll have more usable square footage. May I ask, may I ask Ben to speak?
That's the correct new square footage number, Denise, uh, the 7,730. Trying to find the existing number.
This is gonna be less usable, I mean, less usable space than it already.
No, no, it's gonna be less total square footage, it will be more, more usable square footage because the current seventies addition is only one floor usable, you can't use, there's no second floor, it's not usable space. So when the addition is built, you will have a full usable, so you're increasing the usable footage, decreasing the total square footage.
The existing gross square footage is 9,400.
So we did, um, as I said, we signed a contract, or we're about to sign a contract with the GC. They have been informed, um, about Mr. Moriarty, and we've made sure that they will go and introduce themselves when they start. Um, so he is aware of the point people that will be on scene, um, we have a new, um, new project manager, um, for the town, who will also be on site and will, uh, make himself known as well, just so that if there's any issues from the others or from the town perspective, we'll have the people that folks can reach out to.
How's the new, uh, dish for me finished, outside?
We're still working to do that, we primarily work, working some stone work.
Same colors as the past?
You don't match, right, but we've been through this for a year, you don't match, right? So the exterior design committee has not identified, um, the final, yeah, it'll be, um, what they've narrowed in on to some type of a brave, but they haven't decided.
Do you have any architectural drawings, what is qualified?
We do, Ben, are you, is something you can share, you have easily accessible?
I'm sorry, what are you after, you guys are a little choppy on the audio, exterior drawings?
Some drawings of what it will look like, the finished product. I know they're on our website, but.
Yes, is the, um, is the rendering the best? I'm sure, give me a moment to pull that up. Yeah, I got it here, just, uh. Can you guys enable, uh, screen sharing, the host, please?
Sorry.
Yep, thank you. There you go, are you able to? There you go. Are you able to see that?
Yep.
Yes, thanks, Ben.
Uh, this.
Standing on the.
And here are some illustrated exterior elevations that. Illustrate the character of the new addition. It's predominantly a palette of gray. And sort of buff stone and gray brick. But as Denise described, we haven't yet finalized the exact brick type and blend.
So while this stuff, you can see we, even though we've downsized things, we are still expecting a little bit of a courtyard there and then along. We are still restoring the historical entrance. So people will have the ability to enter. I know there was a question on draft. Permit, the, so the entrances are actually two different levels. But we are still restoring the historic entrance. So there'll be outdoor space. There'll be courtyard space. That will get people off the road and have the ability to be outside and read or the kids hang out. They're outside now playing. Tag now that they're in this building. We have a lawn outside. So I think folks will really enjoy being able to sit outside and look courtyard.
So Ben, could you put the diagram back up that is, had the like the vertical panel look? Of the, of the addition? Yeah, lower left there. So there's no horizontal lines in that or is that just a rendering in it?
Um, there are. There are. There will be some horizontal lines, but it is primarily, the patterning is primarily vertical to sort of accentuate the verticality of the original building. And that, that side of the building, that east side of the building, that is for. Cost effectiveness, that is a cementitious panel material. It is, it is not brick. The, the brick is on the primary elevation here, the west elevation, and then it, it turns the corner onto the south to. Sort of accentuate the entry here in this bit, and then it transitions to a more cost effective material palette.
Okay, got it. Thank you very much.
And that east is mostly the back. So it will be covered by trees for most part.
Yeah, exactly. One that was really the one that used to have some level of compatibility with the whole building.
It's got the one.
And it does look like it. It's good. Then that's a brick facade, is that correct?
That's right. Yep.
And we do expect those that rock at the bottom, the stonework will bring in what we discussed as a, at the committee was that's what we make again, some tones of red, some reddish hues on the stone. To blend it more with the original building color.
Good. Thank you.
Take a moment. Well. If there's any butters here that likes comments.
You are the butter, really.
Privilege. I have Irish ancestors. I feel like it's a great privilege to live next to the existing library where I think the folks six years ago or whenever it was who put the addition on. Really gave a lot of thought and respect to the original building in terms of matching materials. Spaces flowed. I recognize that it's developed problems over the years. I doubt that I'll be interested in seeing what is being proposed here. Not for me. But I think the process is well down the road at this point. So that's just one person's personal. I'm glad that setbacks have been rectified at one point that we're talking about putting the bump out that was everyone from my property line. The newer plans of improvement in that regard. My, my major concern is accessibility to our mechanical systems. I understand the air conditioning is now running over the roof or something to be for my property, which is good. I, in the past, I've had intrusions on my property from various service workers and my hope is that. Anything that has to be accessed will be able to be done so entirely on the library property without driving across like that earth. Because it's not in my comments. I was pleased to meet with the design team and town officials who were very forthcoming in terms of trying to keep my temperature down. I think it very much succeeds.
Excellent. Thank you very much, sir.
So, so we are going fully electric on the building. So I know those can pass the issues with the gas company primarily. So they will no longer be servicing that property.
I think one of the problems too was the fact that that bump out around the Chinese section was so close to my property that they couldn't get equipment. Through to get air conditioners and ceiling units. And so hopefully that now will.
Yes, so we will have a, there will be a door. Pretty much where the new and the old building meet and then we have sidewalk, walkway if you will, that will go to Common Road. So access into the mechanical room will be from Common Road primarily or from inside the building is what our goal is. Oh, thank you. Thank you, Ben. So right along the back there is a little sidewalk and that's where we'll go right into the mechanical area.
I do want to be clear, though. Sorry, I, I just want to be clear, though. We, we do still have, and this is, this is the same as our previous design from last fall. We do still have one condensing unit that will be on grade behind, that, that's what this, this white square is or rectangle is indicating here. So it's not, it's not that far away from where the condensing units are. But it will be much more accessible in that, as Denise just described, there's essentially a path. Along the entirety of the back of the library coming from each direction. To service this equipment, provide an egress point out of the lower level. And then provide service access from Crescent Street. To get to the meters. The, the electric meter will be back there and there's some other utilities entering the building. No, no longer gas to Denise's point, but. There's a service path along the back now for, for those purposes.
On Zoom, members of the public or letters to, like, there are no other letters.
Hi. This is Alice DeLuca. So we're, we're right across the street. I'm kind of interested to know what are the hours that the work will be going on and what sort of noise level would we expect?
So that was in the original permit that we don't intend to change. I think it was seven to three.
Seven to five.
I think we actually have a rating.
It was modified to be on a worse. Seven A M. to three P M. Monday through Friday excluding holidays and then eight A M. to twelve P M. on Saturdays.
And then G C does, has no intention to work Saturdays unless there's an emergency. We've already talked about that.
And, and what kind of noise level would we anticipate?
The normal demolition and construction noise level. I mean, it's demolishing the building, Alice, so. I, you know. It will be noisy for a period of time.
How, how long do they anticipate that going on for?
We don't have a schedule yet. I don't know.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions or comments from folks on Zoom?
I don't think so. Any other, yes, just one comment. When this new building, the building you're tearing down is for the town meeting, the major concern at the town meeting was. The access, what kids would be doing in the, between his property and the town building, the library. There's a big discussion about that. It'd be smoking back there. But that's not the only thing that passes in trouble.
So is this where you say kids will be kids?
Yeah. Sorry, maybe a revival.
Any other questions, comments, concerns by members of the board, either here or on Zoom?
I, I have some concerns. You know, we talked about space, usable space versus nonusable space. You know, what we have now in terms of the second floor, I know some people feel that some of the space is not usable. I, you know, I use the library a lot. I've always felt that there is more usability than, than is being utilized there. So when I hear that we're downsizing, you know, what's gonna be added, it's gonna be more useful. I wonder about that, honestly. I mean, I just have some honest issues and concerns about it.
I appreciate that. I don't think that's a Z B A concern, but I appreciate that.
And then this, the other thing is aesthetically, that may not be Z B A.
It is not. It is not duly noted, but it is not.
Not a taxpayer, you know, we, you know, it's all about.
We held a lot of public meetings.
I know, and, and you've mentioned, you know, in the front, you know, there's a red hue so that may blend in with the rest of the red building. And I'm just wondering. Why couldn't some kind of red hue be used for the, for the extension so that maybe that would blend in a little better with the, with the original building as well?
So we put an exterior building committee together specifically to discuss that. That's not the direction they chose after the public feedback.
I guess I did. But I have, I do have one. Okay. So any other questions or comments? Otherwise, I'm having a motion.
We'll be close up here.
I just have a few things that I put myself.
Oh, I'm sorry. No, no, I, I understand my. Here we go. Any discussion?
Yes.
I'm sorry, that was my fault. I, I didn't give you up to, that's my fault.
Most of my concerns were met. I just want to know, there's some screening that's proposed near the dumpsters.
Oh, right.
I wanted just to see if the board found that to be satisfactory.
Yeah, it wasn't like they turned the screen too short.
In part, there was. The plants they've proposed have a height of two to three feet. Typically, the board requires plantings of six feet. There are a lot of plants proposed, so you could consider it to be adequate. It just, I wanted the board just to. Consider that.
No, but I did learn about the cedar apple rust.
Me too.
It's kind of important, actually, being that close to it. It should be something like in the town that we shouldn't let anybody plant that stuff.
Yeah, it was brought up at another public hearing that we have with the planning board, another applicant proposed juniper plantings. And because they were within one mile of an apple orchard, they, the peer reviewers said, we don't recommend that because it can. Do it. I know some species of juniper are resistant, but there can always be a mistake in what you plant. Exactly aligned. We can make a condition that says it must be resistant or just don't allow juniper. But that was just something that was brought up recently. I know we are protective of our apple culture.
We should be.
If the applicant or the board has any questions on that, just for discussion.
No, it was pretty clear about that particular point. There shall be no plant. That's pretty clear.
So I, I would ask Ben or Audrey to comment, but we do have a landscape architect that we can certainly bring these concerns to. I think regarding the dumpsters. They will be primarily against the wood line. So I don't know how many trees or plantings we can put around it or else they won't be able to access to get in and empty the dumpster. So it will be. It will be shielded for the most part by the wood line and then on the sides will have some plantings. But Ben or Audrey, do you have any comments on the juniper species of plants?
Other than it's not really my area of expertise, no. We do have a landscape architect, though, who are very. Conscious and obviously environmentally focused in all of their work. So if there are specific concerns. We'd, we'd like to hear them and we can bring them to our landscape architect to make sure they're met. I, I was perusing the, the planting list as you guys were, were discussing and. There is one type of juniper. On it, but I, I'm not familiar with the issue that you were describing and whether or not this is the type, type of juniper or not. But we can certainly look into that. Absolutely.
We'll have him swap it out. We'll talk to landscape architect, but we will make sure that they are prone to cedar apple rust.
It's the, it's the, it's the shored juniper, if that means any, if that means anything to you all. And then on the comment about the planting size by. The dumpsters. Those are a series of, of red maples that we're trying to get in between the property line and the dumpsters. At a five to six foot caliper to start. And I, I think, you know, if I could offer this, if it's, if it's fair to me, it's like, that's the type of thing, like, once the planting arrives on site, which granted won't be until. You know, next spring at best. You know, you can, you can move plantings around fairly easily before they're actually permanently placed in the ground. So, you know, that's something that we could, you know, we could finesse. With the town's input to make sure we get those in the, in the best possible places.
Is there any protection of the trees from the dumpster? Cause they're not very.
Delicate when they put them down. Maybe the tree's not.
There's a, there's a curb, there's a curb between the dumpster, because the dumpsters are on wheels and they have to be rolled out to the street to get picked up. So there's a curb stopping them from, from going into the planting area.
Any further discussion on the pending motion? No, hearing now, we're on favor of closing the public hearing. That the public hearing is closed. I understand that there is a draft decision. Unfortunately, I have not seen it.
I thought I included it in the zip file, but I can print off copies really quickly if we want. I put, I must have had them in the paper packets, but I don't know if I had them digital.
Oh, it's not, it's not draft.
Oh.
I have mine here. What if you need to print copy?
Yeah, I don't think it's in the draft.
It is here. Oh. I just saw it.
Well, there's a series of, you just have to go to five, I have to find the right one.
Here's another.
Yeah. No. I got, this is like three different artifacts and one is labeled June third, twenty twenty four.
I'll go email it myself.
Michael, do you mind emailing it to me? Cause I don't think it made it into the zip file.
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Some of those papers.
There's a lot of paper. That zip file, oh, there's a lot of things to print out.
First item here.
I'm wearing a dog jacket.
And it is.
Open the windows.
Probably turned off, but he did.
I was trying to speed the meeting along, you know, freeze you out of here.
It's working. Working.
That's your bedtime?
Michael sending out the notification.
Should have gone through.
Any comments, pages? Version of looking at the last page says page eight or five.
This one looks okay. Nevermind.
I can make sure that's.
All right. Any comments, pages, one, two, three?
So there's a blank on point number seven, page three.
That I was going to add in is a compressing unit or compressor unit, which was clarified.
On there.
No.
Where's the compressor?
It was that gray box.
On the sidewalk.
Number six is a type of, the board finds that there is a transformer is proposed. I think it's just, there's a transformer proposed.
Pipe that comes up like this. And you're having to come up automatically.
All right. Landscaping of fifteen. Yeah, I think it's fifteen and sixteen, and when I talk about junipers or plants.
That's still a problem.
Peter, excuse me.
Or are we okay as a, as a group? Well, well, is that group? I'm sorry.
I mean, you've got discussion with Jennifer later. And the decision.
Okay. And I think Ben alluded to the fact that positioning to the, you know, yeah. Tweet, the day you stick it in the ground.
On twelve is the pavement to be impervious or not? And the twenty, in the last time, on August fourteenth, that was impervious, but is it new pavement, will be impervious?
The new park, the new paving associated with the parking area on Common Road will be impervious. It, it was not in the previous design because we had more impervious area. The footprint was bigger, all of that. So we did have impervious asphalt, but that, that has changed in this design.
Michael, what are you thinking on, I remember eighteen?
On number eighteen, that was clarified that it will be for access to meters for building mechanicals.
And, and also just in the rare case of emergency egress out of the lower level, that's, that's the other purpose of the walkway that goes towards Common Road.
Twenty one, should we say something? Do you want to plan?
That was a condition in the, in the previous decision and it's not being waived, so it will still apply. Two is because I didn't know what that air compressor or whatever was, so I didn't know if the board had any stance on that.
Does anyone on the board have any feelings about number, condition two?
If I could just make a comment in response to something I just, I just heard, item number twenty one about there's no, there's no plan for erosion and stormwater control. We do have that plan developed now because the project has gone out to bid and we have got a contractor in place. So we can share that with you. Whatever's convenient. If you want to include that in your, in your findings here.
It's too late now to include it, but I think in the previous decision where I think we're required to submit one to the planning department. So. So once this is done, submit a test and it'll be all set.
Okay. Easy enough. Thank you.
All right. Any other comments, questions, of draft decision?
The only thing on buildings, just to clarify, you know, the total building footprint, whether we're talking about just the extension or the total building with the current, you know, building footprint as well. I think we just need to clarify that.
Yeah, the three thousand seven hundred and ten number for the footprint includes both the addition footprint and the existing building.
Yeah, I, I, I think we should state that for, you know, for clarification.
So for finding fifteen, I don't know if I heard an answer on that. Is the screen adequate?
Anything else?
Move the grant specialment for the library. As first of all, spread the special. As edited.
I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Second emotion.
Emotionally, we have a second, any discussion, hearing none, all in favor?
Okay. And move that we approve the draft decision as modified.
Second. Motion, second, any discussion, hearing none, all in favor? Passes.
When do we move it?
Next year, June, and that's our targeting. I mean, it started pretty quickly.
All right.
You all good with us, Denise?
I get world stuff. Thank you all.
Thank you. Thanks, everyone, for your time. Appreciate it.
Thank you. All right. Unless there's any other business, order to the motion?
Make a motion that we adjourn the meeting at nine twenty five.
Your motion, we have a second, any discussion? Any? Any discussion at all? Hearing none, all in favor?
Me neither. Hi, you guys.
Thank you.